Good morning, everyone. Today is the Town Council's regular monthly, or regular meeting Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021 via go-to-meeting. We will begin the meeting with a pledge. I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America.
Injustice is for all. Thank you all. Christina Dennis will be joining us shortly, so just so everybody knows. At this point, are there any visitors on the call that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors? Okay. Then we can move on to the. Oh, Zach Lord, yep, okay. Thank you.
Bill Grine, Energy Committee.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes for the special meeting, January 2021, and the regular meeting, January 21st, 2021, we have a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, or I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. We will now move on to number four, which is the appointments and reappointments. We'll start with Peter and I, Republican Board of Education. Peter's up for a replacement for Omar Francis, who has submitted his resignation because he's unable to fulfill his duties. But at this point, we will look for a motion to approve Pete Nye as the Board of Education for a term until November 2021.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. A second? Is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained? Thank you. We will move on to Art, so Arthur Kyber, Democrat, Public Works Commission, alternate seat for a term until 6/30/2021. Art was on this committee before, had a step aside during COVID, but I guess his now, his time is freed up again, so he's looking to take over the alternate seat. So a motion to appoint Art to the DPW for a term until 6/30/2021.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I've worked with Art on the, as the liaison from the Town Council, and he is very active and involved, and he will be welcomed back on their commission, I'm sure.
Great. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Next, we are all for the Historic District Commission. Richard Greer, Democrat. Gary Bango, Republican, and Laura Reynolds, a Democrat. At this point, we probably can just do a motion for all three, since it's all for the same commission. So at this point, we'll look for a motion to appoint Richard Greer for a term until 6/30/2023, Gary Bango for a term until 6/30/2025, and Laura Reynolds for a term as an alternate seat for a term until 6/30/2023.
I'll make that motion, Tim.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. It looks like now we are good. We're up to five now on Historic District Commission, I believe now, so good luck to everybody going forward. The next appointment would be for Diane Brennan, Republican, to the Tree Committee for a term until 6/30/2021. Motion to approve?
All moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. And finally, we're looking for the Connecticut Water Company Advisory Council appointment. Previously, we talked to Mark, but I mean, is there a motion to put forth a appointment for this advisory council?
I'm confused. I thought we already appointed Mark, no?
Yeah, the discussion at the last meeting, we haven't finalized it. That's why it's on for this.
Well, can I make a motion to formally appoint Mark to the Connecticut Water Company Advisory Council?
That would be great. Is there a second?
I just did.
A second?
I'll second. Tim?
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I don't know, I'm still trying to find out what exactly this appointment would entail. Of course, Mark would be an excellent appointment for it, but could you just tell us just briefly how many people will be on it? What will be their authority?
I think Carl, you have been.
Yeah, this has been a topic of conversation in the past several Town Council meetings. It's an advisory council that's created for the Connecticut Water Company. It is not a Town of Clinton board. It's separate to the Water Company. There's representatives from every one of the towns that the Water Company services, and its point is to get some consumer feedback to the decisions that the Water Company makes. Most importantly, right now is when they're in rate-setting mode, that you would have some additional feedback from ratepayers and the different communities.
May I, may I speak? I think in terms of getting someone who's got some skin in the game, I think we couldn't have a better representative than Mark, because he's well-informed, he's intelligent, and he is a very, a large consumer of Connecticut Water Company services. So he's someone who can look at it from both sides of the table, both as a consumer and both as a representative for the Town of Clinton. I just feel that he would be a terrific representative for our town on that panel, someone who's well-informed and has skin in the game.
All right, great, thank you then, and thank you for stepping up, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor then to appoint Mark to Connecticut Water Company Advisory Council?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Move on to number five, which is the Fire Department. So authorization to install underground water storage tank at the intersection of Cow Hill Road and Airline Road. Is Brian on the call? Yep, there's Brian. So Brian, you want to just give us a little, little insight on what's going on over here?
Absolutely, so good morning, all. Happy New Year, it's my first time in front of the council for the new year. So I hope everybody's well and survived the storm. I think everything went well. All right, so just a brief description of where we're at. This is following the 2015 water supply study that we completed along with the Town of Clinton for fire protection and public water for fire protection. And basically, I believe 18 months ago, roughly was the last bonding package, the taxpayers approved 2.25 million as part of the bonding package for the installation, the first round of installation of underground water storage tanks. Because of COVID, we kind of stayed the project till there was a little more financial stability throughout the town. Working with Carl and with Todd at the Department of Public Works, we met and were able to move forward with the first three sites. So we sought out a local engineer who has worked on these projects. So Harken Engineering out of Killingworth is working with us now. We've identified three sites currently, two of which are on town property, and one is on Clintland Trust property. We figured it was easier to get our feet wet with these rather than getting into private property and having to attain easements and so on and so forth. The purpose of being on today is formal approval to actually install one of these tanks on a piece of town property that isn't governed by another board or commission. And the triangle that the Little Red Schoolhouse sits on at the intersection of Cow Hill and Airline has been identified as a prime site for that entire area. It would have no effect on any of the current monuments or the existing building. It would go in the grass area behind the building. So we're looking for formal permission from the Town Council to go ahead and utilize that site. And then I'll open it up to any questions.
Yeah, Brian, this is Tim Guerra. When would you be looking to start this work?
Uh, we're, so basically, it's gonna be a multi-step process, Tim. Once we get the approval to utilize the site, they'll do some test holes. They'll actually come in and do, the engineer will hire somebody to go out and draw out the site, and then he'll load it into his computer and figure out what the tank configuration will be. Once we have all that information, we'll develop the specification, and we'll have to go out to bid. And then from that point on, once it's awarded, it's really in the hands of the contractor. You're looking at probably a three-month lead time just for ordering and receiving the tank. So we have some time, but we really can't move too much further forward without authorization to use the site.
Thank you. Any other questions, Carol?
Yeah, Brian, what would you see at the end of the day, once the tank is installed? What kind of access would be above ground?
So I apologize, I didn't get a chance to email Mary a couple of pictures, like I sent to the Clintland Trust for their meeting. I'll get those out to you hopefully some point today. Basically, if you're familiar with what a well tile looks like, it's roughly a 24-inch cylindrical piece of concrete that sticks about a foot out of the ground, and then you'll have two pieces of iron pipe that will stick probably no more than 24 inches off the ground. Those are for hose connections, and there'll be a little concrete pad that surrounds all of that, and then some protective bollards to protect, to stop cars from getting into there. That's about it. Everything else will be returned and tried to make the properties aesthetically pleasing based on wherever the tank is located.
Anyone else? Okay, with no other questions, and I will look for a motion to authorize the installation of an underground water storage tank at the intersection of Cow Hill Road and Airline Road.
So moved.
Second? Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, thank you, thank you, Brian. We'll move on to item number six, Harbor Grill lease agreement. You all have received the letter that was sent over to Carl from Evan Johnson, who was leaseholder for the property over at the Clinton Harbor Grill, asking to be released from the third year of his third-year contract. I will kind of, I guess, move it over to Carl to kind of have him give some background on how we should kind of proceed with this.
Yeah, so I think if you've read the letter, you can see that he's having some business challenges of trying to make a success of the lease out at the harbor. He's asked to be released from the agreement early, given the going-business concern that he articulates in his letter. It'd be hard-pressed to force him to stay there. So recommendation would be we release him from his obligations as a tenant, and then try and find another vendor in order to go in there. It's obviously a unique business, which, when I've done concession stands like this in the past, putting it out for bid doesn't always give you a vendor, or sometimes you have problematic vendors. So I think it's a matter of trying to identify individuals who might be interested in serving the public from the property, and then determining whether or not we have a viable business entity that has the ability to execute and perform well. Recent experience, there was an award recently given at the beach for Park and Recommission to an entity that they reached out to to try and establish the concession stand again at the beach. That's an entity that has been quite successful in Westbrook, and that's how Parker Rec came across them to make sure that they had an entity that could provide the service that's desired. So at this point, the recommendation is release the current tenant out of his lease obligations, and then we will try and identify potential other vendors who might want to operate the concession stand.
That's a question.
Question, Carol?
When he came in with his bid, it was quite substantial and way, way, way over what the previous tenant had been paying. And I'm just wondering, in the interest of continuity, if there would be any discussion of allowing him to pay less and continue and complete his three-year contract? His, huh? Or is he, he's just determined to be out?
It reads that he's determined to be out. If you recall, we did amend his agreement once before. I did raise the issue of rent in order to make sure that he had a menu that was priced appropriately, and he decided he did not want to reduce the rent and then reduce the cost of his food. So that was a non-issue last year.
Okay, all right.
So I think if you read the letter, he's got his business issues, and then he also has family pressures for being a new father.
He had created a large amount of overhead for himself. And what about any modifications that he made to the property there? Didn't he bring in some appliances of his own? And will those have to be removed and replaced by the town? Or how would that best be handled?
Anything that's a fixed asset of his should be removed and taken away. What a new vendor would bring in, we'd be looking for them to bring some of their equipment in to operate the space. That's, that was the arrangement that took place at the beach. That was an entity that wanted to use propane gas. There isn't propane at the beach, and he paid for that connection in order to bring in his equipment. So in this particular case, I think it's a matter of finding who's gonna be the vendor, whether they have a preference for electricity or gas or some other fuel to operate the concession stand.
Okay.
Typically, they have those soda companies give away free refrigerators. There's ways to get, get stuff to stock out a concession stand.
Okay. Just would like to set whoever comes in next up for as much success as possible. It's a real benefit.
This is Christine Gupeel. There was interest in the building after we went through the bidding process. Once they established themselves, people approached the town saying that they might be interested next time the opportunity comes up. So if this is made public through the bidding process and maybe through the press, we might get additional interest from those people who were interested a couple of years ago.
Anyone else? At this point, then, we can look for a motion then to release, where are they now? So Clintland Harbor Grill from their lease, from the last year of their lease agreement. Is there a motion?
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much. We're gonna now move on to number seven, which is the Energy Committee. We discussed this at our last meeting. So we would like to now, at this point, move forward with establishing the formation of the Energy, the Clintland Energy Committee. You've all received the mission and the initiatives that were put forth by Paul Gabauer at our last meeting. I think if everybody's comfortable with what he's presented to us, I think the only thing that we have to sort of address on this was, and add to this initiative is just the number of members that they would like on this committee. I did have a conversation with Paul after the last meeting. He did discuss a number of maybe seven members, based upon kind of some information that we'll talk about. And after this, we would be in good shape. So I guess would be, first of all, open up the discussion if everybody's comfortable with these initiatives of the Energy Committee, number one. Number two, when we move forward to set the number of membership at seven. So first, is everybody comfortable with these initiatives?
I am.
I did ask Paul to join this morning, but I don't know if he had other commitments. But if, you know, if everybody's good with what they've brought forth, and this is what they'd like to work on, Carol?
The second initiative, where they can set a goal of converting to an EV fleet for the town by 2025? It's so, so how stringent are these goals? Because in terms of budget and logistics and reality, that one, I can't see, I can't see turning the entire town fleet over by 2025. I mean, are these, these are not set in stone, right?
No, just initiative. This is what they're working, the goals that they're working towards. The reality of, I mean, just like any other sort of committee and advisory committee, they would have to come forth to the council, they'd have to come forth to the town manager if there were certain things that needed, that they would want accomplished. So these are initiatives that they're working towards accomplishing.
All right.
And Mr. Chairman, will we have updates? Is there a timeline on this?
Again, yeah, I mean, like any others. I mean, we can set, you know, something in place where they come and talk to us, you know, however often we would like to hear from them, to just get an update on what they're working on.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then at this point, let's look for a motion for the formation of the Energy Committee, set forth by the missions and initiatives that we have in place now with the addition of setting membership at seven.
I'll make that motion.
Um, second.
Any other further discussion?
I'll call you back.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstained? Thank you. And at this point, we do have a number of people that have set their, or put their name forth for this. So at this point, we can actually set membership if we're open to that. We do have seven members, seven individuals that have put their names forth for the Energy Committee. Paul Gabauer, Douglas Ashtray, Eileen O'Donnell, Paul Neary, William Grine, Zachary Plord, and Aiden Moran. If everybody's comfortable with that, we can make a motion to appoint membership to the committee right now.
I'd like to make that motion to appoint those seven members to the Energy Committee.
Second?
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you very much. All right, we move on now to land use, department line item transfer request. Everybody has the request and a letter from Kathy King, along with the invoices they're looking to pay. Are there any questions on this? Okay, hearing done, then we look for a motion to approve the line item transfer as presented for, let's see, transferring funds from inland wetlands.
All moved.
I'm sorry, for $798.98.
All moved.
Second? Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. All right, now we move on to our favorite time of the year. Up now, we have the budget calendar, set forth Town Council Town Manager 2021 Budget Calendar. Everybody has a copy of it. Everybody has the dates, the times, and at this point, we're just looking for a motion to approve the 2021 Budget Calendar.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Am I reading this correctly, that we hear the Board of Education's budget first?
No, this is, this is following the pattern we did last year, where you get a high-level presentation at the beginning of the process. So just, last year, I'd lay out the grand scheme of the budget, high-level impacts and the town side revenues, and then superintendent of schools would lay out briefly where the Board of Education was on its, its piece of the budget. There would be a separate workshop, as there was last year, where the Board of Ed would be a featured presenter. But we would also be marching through the town budgets, just like we did last year.
Okay, so, so I'm not seeing on this calendar that separate presentation by the Board of Education. Am I reading that correctly?
February 9th is the presentation of the budget, so that's.
That is, that is the entire presentation, okay, all right. Doesn't it usually?
You'll get the big book from me for what the town size is and revenues. You'll get a separate thing from Mary Ann for what the Board of Ed was. There'll be a presentation to describe the budget, budget themes and all the rest. I mean, this is, this is how we kicked off the budget season last year of laying out where, where we are in terms of what the finances look like. When you get into those separate budget workshops scheduled for the 18th, 23rd, and 25th, those are all separate by department. So if you look at that, it looks like a spreadsheet. Most of the town departments you see populated on the 18th. You have a couple of other departments that populate on the 25th. Board of Education is a special focus with just the Town Council on the 23rd.
Okay.
Land use is the 25th. Do you have that?
Gotcha.
Carl, we'll, we'll receive those books soon, I would expect, so we have time to review them, is that correct?
Well, since I'm still working on the budget, you're not gonna get it today. So the intent would be similar to what we did last year, which was give you the book. So you'll get the book on it in time for the meeting on the 9th. You then have over a week to look at it before we meet again on the 18th. So you'll have a whole nine days to read it, review it, and be prepared to go through the individual budgets, line item by line item, like we did previously. And then that meeting gets slated for March 2nd, would be the time for the council to wrap up its budget adjustments and amendments based on either your questions or suggestions, or if we get refined numbers from individual vendors or contracts and the like, that could affect the numbers you're gonna get initially at the start of the budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so at this point, look for a motion to approve the 2021 Budget Calendar.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Okay, we move on to number, Town Chairman's Reports. Just a couple things, obviously, I want to thank DPW again for all the work over the past couple of days. They were out, obviously, all night, working through the last storm. Thank you very much for all the work that they've done on this last storm by making sure everything was taken care of in a timely manner. So I appreciate all their work. Would like to also thank Michael Neff for setting up the event over at the Town Hall, where they were able to get some volunteers. So thank the volunteers, which were Linda Goriak, David Burns, and Peter Neff for volunteering to help the seniors in our town, the 75-plus, that were having a very difficult time, or that were having a difficult time registering and getting the vaccination set up. So thank all them for that. And then one other thing, I don't know, obviously, we're coming into budget season, so there's gonna be a lot of meetings that we're going to have to undertake. I do want to discuss, discuss at some point, as a council, maybe putting something. I do want to discussion, discuss at some point, as a council, maybe putting something, some sort of meeting together, some sort of something, uh, which will help, hopefully, maybe the public understand better how we function as a town council and how we function as the town manager. I believe we're still struggling a little bit with this because there still seems to be some chatter that goes on uh, in town about how things are handled. And I think maybe once again, if we have a, an open and honest conversation about how things are to be run in the town based upon our new form of government, uh, it would be very helpful and go a long way, um, to just making sure that we can all continue down the path of working together. So I'm just throwing it out there. I just want to see, maybe we'll put it on the agenda for another meeting. Maybe we can talk about how we do this. But I think it'd be very important for us as a town council, as a town manager, and as a town overall, uh, about, again, putting this out. It's new. We're, we're a year into it and I, and I think there's still some questions. I still think there's a lot of talk that goes on about who should be doing what, where, and how. And I think we need to resolve it. I think we need to take care of that now upfront. This is our form of government going forward. It's not changing. So we need to make sure that everybody understands how as a town, we function properly, uh, and function in the best way for our town. So first of all, just wanted to throw it out there and hopefully, you know, in the coming months, we can sit here and, and have an honest conversation about how we kind of get that message out with some input from the public, because I'm sure they have plenty of questions. So instead of their questions being answered by an individual, maybe they can just come directly to us. We're all in one, um, you know, one, one space and so that we can all have these questions answered, you know, in a manner that, that they get the right answers, so that they understand, you know, how we move forward with this new form of government. So I just wanted to put that, that out there as well. Uh, we'll now move on to number 11, which is the Town Manager's Report.
I have my written report, uh, dominating for you the activities of what took place at the most recent cog meeting and the Estuary Transit Board. Uh, I do want to spend a little bit more time, um, giving you some additional information for materials that were not included in the written, uh, report. There's a plenty, there are plenty of bills, uh, being tracked by the cog in the legislature. Uh, that's more just for your interest. Uh, if there's something specific you want to get into, we can certainly look to try and get you more information. Uh, you want to spend time talking about where we came in on the grant list. By statute, the grant list has to be approved by the assessor at the end of, uh, January. So, uh, as I gave you in the financial forecast, the last two revaluations didn't really see significant growth in the grant list. And then as a result, we didn't have any kind of real change in where mill rates went. Uh, so that, that was sort of the history as the town recovered from at least the 2008 recession. Coming out of the revale for October 1, uh, of 2020, the total grant list, uh, before the Board of Assessment Appeals Act is projected to increase by 5.7%, uh, reflecting healthy growth in the community. It's not all on the residential, uh, leg or slice of the, the grant list pie. A lot of growth took place in commercial and industrial property. And in matter of fact, the, the residential slice of the pie reduced in size, uh, albeit small from where it was previously, uh, which has been, you know, speaks to the diversification of the tax base that's taken place in town to lighten the load on the individual, uh, resident taxpayer. That kind of growth, uh, if we had that grant list in place for the current fiscal year, the mill rate would have reduced. Would have been down to 29 and a half mills instead of 31.25. So growth in the grant list normally triggers that reduction in mill rate. So it would be, that sort of sets the table going forward into the budget process is, unless something earth-shattering happens between now and next week, we should be looking at, uh, an environment where there would be a reduced mill rate. What that translates into in terms of the average taxpayer, um, and the different types of residential properties in town, uh, I'm working on that, those numbers for you to work into the budget presentation as way of a bit of public education to understand what happened in this revale and, and what the net real, real tax, uh, levy will be to individuals with their, their assessments. Building the budget, I'm not going to be assuming that 5.7% increase because this does reflect where values are before the Board of Assessment Appeals. So there will have to be, uh, a discount built into the budget process, given the fact that, uh, the board still has to take its actions and they're not slated to do their hearings until March. So based on the budget calendar, when the council is wrapping up the budget, uh, to make final amendments before it goes to annual budget meeting at the beginning of April, that's when we would have, uh, a finalized grant list to work on. So it's good news, the grant list grew. Uh, it's good news that we should be anticipating a reduction in the mill rate. And then what that translates into is, uh, function of expenditures and how we balance the budget going forward. So that's, that's, those are all positive things.
Thank you, Sal. Any questions? Okay, move on to number 12, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Anybody have any updates or reports?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, uh, this Monday night, the Planning and Zoning will be holding a, uh, public hearing on the, on the application, the corn crib. So, um, uh, the building of 32 apartments at 151, 153 East Main Street should be very interesting. The petitioners would like the developers to retain the historic structures or at least incorporate them into the plans. I think Peggy, I see you on the call. I think you are one of the leaders of this movement. So I, I think I encourage you to attend, uh, Monday night's public hearing at the Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Eric. Any other committee updates? Nice. All right. We're done. We'll move for a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Some move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained. Thank you all very, very much again. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.